I'd like to call the order, the February tenth, 2010, meeting of the Parkway School Board. Please rise and join me in the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Ms. Klein.
Mrs. Castillo, Mrs. Feldman.
Here.
Mr. Jacob.
Here.
Mr. Major.
Here.
Mr. McCarter. Mrs. Mulgeman.
Here.
Mr. Davis.
Here. Tonight, we have lots and lots of special recognitions, and the Board is pleased to have an exceptional group of Parkway students who earned All-State Music Honors during the All-State Festival Concert at the Missouri Music Educators Association Conference in January. Sandy Collins, if you would please come to the podium, we'd like to start our recognition.
I like to have eye contact.[86.56][86.56](Laughter). Good evening, President Davis, members of the Board of Education, Dr. Malito, Mrs. Kalanda, and ladies and gentlemen. It is with great honor this evening that I introduce twenty-four extremely talented and dedicated Parkway High School musicians who have achieved the distinction of having been selected to perform in the 2010 Missouri All-State Choir Band Jazz Band or Orchestra. Auditions for these performing positions were serious and competitive. Prior selection for local ensembles was necessary, and auditions at the next level had to be performed perfectly with the technical skill and understanding that made them stand out from hundreds of other students from across the state of Missouri vying for the same seats. They represented Parkway in their respective concerts, which were performed at the end of January at the Missouri Music Educators Conference before a very appreciative audience of music educators and parents. These successful students have demonstrated the very highest level of musical competency and have shown a personal commitment to artistic excellence. I would like to thank their music teachers for motivating, nurturing, and guiding these students into skilled, accomplished musicians. Parents, thank you also for your continued support all along that way. You must be very proud of your students tonight as we are of the 2010 All-State Music Students, and so congratulations to all. I would now like to introduce the All-State Music Students by school and ask that they join their principal and teachers at the podium to be recognized by the Parkway Board of Education and Dr. Malito. Each group, please remain standing for a photograph, and as your name is called now, please come forward. We'll start with North High School, Principal Dr. Jenny Markwart. And we have some students from North with us this evening. We'll start with Brian Reeves and Derek Fox and their All-State Choir members, which will include Emily Goldstein, second time at All-State, and she's a senior. Come on, Emily. Rachel Cohn. Is it Cohn or Cahn? Cohn, and second year, and she is a senior. Miranda Robert. And she is a senior as well. Maddie Rouse. Maddie is a junior, so maybe you've got one more chance, maybe next year, too. And Jimmy Kwan, and a senior. Jimmy's with us this evening. These are All-State Choir members, and now we'll go to the orchestra. All-State Orchestra members, Ken Rapini, please join us, and he is our orchestra director. And we would like to recognize Nathan Immons, and Nathan is here, and he is a junior. Lucas Bon Durant, a senior. And Andrew Stock with us this evening. Andrew Stock was recognized as an alternate as a freshman, so we hope to see his name in the future. And now, thank you very much, North students, musicians, and I believe Mrs. Kelly would like to photograph you. And I'll keep moving on. Next, we're going to recognize students from South High School, and so Mr. Mazzola, I think I saw someplace here this evening, and we have, and we'll see if anybody's here from, I know we have at least one. We're going to go with Jonathan Owen, and please come forward, Mr. Mazzola, and join the party. Mr. Owen, Jonathan Owen, is our choir director, and he is pre, he is busy this evening and could not join us. But Ben Mulch, I'd like to say, is our bass alternate, and he is a senior from South High. Thanks, Ben. And we're going to go to our All-State Orchestra member, Catherine Bradley, and Catherine's with us. It's her second time at State, and she's a junior. And Kara Welker, clarinet. And could Doug Hoover, please, come down, because he, and Doug, and I think Doug Hoover, if you could join us down here? Oh, no, wait. Wrong school. Never mind. He's wondering why he's coming down. Ed Simon and Marilyn Humiston, I think, had a rehearsal this evening. Chris Becker and Lisa Kinworthy are South teachers, and I do not see them in the audience. So Catherine, Kara Welker, are you with us this evening? Oh, she's behind us. Excellent clarinet player. So these are our South students. And also for the All-State Jazz Ensemble, Mark Cavalo, trumpet honorable mention. Would Mark be here? And Mark's a senior. So we appreciate your students coming out, and I believe Mrs. Kelly would like your photograph, South students. I do know the teachers at each school. I even have it written out. Oh, well. Central High School, please, Mr. Tim Gannon, come forward and help us recognize your students from Central High School. We have an All-State Orchestra group that came from Central High School and their teachers. Winifred Crock, please come forward and join us for that recognition. If you are a wind player and you are selected because of your skill, you have a choice. Do you want to play in the orchestra or the band? So we do have two band students that have been recognized, and so Doug Hoover, please come. They selected to be in the orchestra this year, but that's, but Doug Hoover will be here as well. So here we go. Joy Hee, senior, and four years Joy has been in the All-State group. Connie Chin, a senior as well from Central. Thank you, Connie. And she's a four-year as well. Okay. Two, four years all the way through. Thank you so much, Winnie. That's important. We have a couple of brothers, Adam and Daniel McDonald. Are you here? Now, let's see, which one's Adam? All right, freshman, and which one's Daniel? A sophomore. So we expect to see more from them, and lucky, they both made it. Mom, what would you have done if only one did? So that's a good thing. Competition exists in the family, I'm sure. Okay, Hope Hua, and she is a junior in violin from Central High. Sean Byrne. Sean is a freshman viola player. Ben Park, cello, cellist, and it looks like he is a sophomore. And we have Christopher Wang, who was our instrumentalist oboe player from the band department that joined the orchestra. He is a sophomore. And Maggie Madston is our cello alternate, and a freshman is Maddie, Maggie here. Maggie, that's quite an honor for a freshman. So this concludes our Central High students. Congratulations to everyone, and we're gonna see if we can. That'd be last. Whoops. Well, do you know, her name's not written, but I bet you I can remember Caroline Camp. She is a soprano from Central High. A senior. Carolyn sang a wonderful solo last night at their Masterworks Concert. Beautiful voice. Carolyn, I'm sorry your name was not listed, but Carolyn's wonderful, and we're so happy to recognize her as well. Okay. And last but not least this evening, how about West High School and Principal Beth Plunkett? And our orchestra teachers and Sid Hindrich, and I do not know if Ed was able to be with us tonight, so we'll be happy that Beth is with us. We have two wonderful violinists from West High. Michael Su, please come forward. And Michael is a sophomore. And Bob Song, a junior and from West High. Thank you, boys, for coming out tonight. To conclude our recognitions this evening, I would also like to congratulate one of our teachers, Doug Hoover. Could you please come forward? Band director from Central High. Let me tell you about Doug. Doug was just recently voted, and when I say recently, two weeks ago, to serve as the Missouri Music Educators Band Vice President for the State. He will serve for two years in the state leadership position, so we congratulate Mr. Hoover. Thank you very much, parents and students, for coming out tonight. It's wonderful. Congratulations.
Thank you, Sandy, and thank you all, students and parents alike, for being here this evening. Thank you for bringing this wonderful recognition to Parkway. We're so proud of all of you. I'm gonna take a brief recess. You're welcome to stay if you'd like, but I'm sure lots of you have practice and study to get to, so thank you for joining us.
Chris, now that song is gonna stay in my head all night. Thanks. That probably predates.
Yeah, yeah, the hair up.
(Laughter).
Call the meeting back to order. Four point O, additions, corrections, and modifications. Dr. Malito?
Yes, Mr. Davis. We would like to add two personal items that were discussed and presented at the six-thirty closed session.
Okay, thank you, and we'll cover those on the consent agenda. Five point O, citizen statements. This evening, we have one person sign up. Helen Canast, if you'd please. Okay, I'm sorry. Sign in for the meeting. Okay, no problem.
Now we'll really vouch for you.
Now we know she's here.
We all want to autograph your sheet later.
All right. Six point O, call for a closed session. There is none. Seven point O, approval of the agenda for February tenth, 2010. Can I have a motion and second please to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Eight point O, resolutions. We have one resolution this evening, President's Day, February fifteenth, 2010. Have a motion and second please to approve tonight's resolution.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Nine point O, communications. Nine point O one, calendar of meetings. The next regular meeting of the Board of Education is scheduled for Wednesday, February twenty-fourth, 2010, at Central Middle School at seven thirty P.M. Mr. Major?
I'd like to recognize our new board members. Tom Applebaum, who I understand is here on his wife's birthday this evening, so. Just jump right into the deep end there. And also Sam Sortino, and they will both be seated as new members at our April twenty-first organizational meeting at seven P.M.
Thank you, Mr. Major. Nine point O two, liaison reports. Anyone? Mr. Major?
Had the privilege of attending a session Saturday morning over at Carmen Trails with Dr. Margaret Ferrara from the University of Nevada Reno, who is helping to organize some research efforts on our single-gender initiative here in the district, and there was massive turnout from the teachers there at Carmen Trails, and also the Ross staff was there in force, as were the progress monitoring coaches. So really interesting session, very informative, and pretty inspiring for some of the, A, the initiative we're going with here in the district on single-gender education, and B, the potential impact that has literally nationwide, some of the research coming out of that. So really enjoyed that session. Dr. Maxey, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Major. Mrs. Feldman?
I had the privilege last night of attending the Masterworks Concert put on by the Central High Music Department that we were just talking about a minute ago. It was held at the United Methodist Church, Manchester Methodist Church, which is a wonderfully acoustic, beautiful place to hold a concert, and it was the Central High, all the different choirs and all the different orchestras, and it was really fabulous, and just compliments to the Central High Music Department.
Mrs. Mulgeman?
A couple of weeks ago, I had the privilege of attending a documentary film that was actually made and produced by a Parkway graduate, Eric Bricker, and it was at the Webster Film Series. It was called Visual Acoustics: The Modernism of Julia Schulman. Julia Schulman was a photographer of modern architecture, especially residential architecture, and it was a very well-done movie, a very interesting. Dustin Hoffman was the narrator, and it was very exciting. Mr. Bricker wasn't there, but his mother was there, leading the discussion, so it was very fun. She mentioned Parkway, which was very exciting. So if you have the chance, I understand it's coming out on DVD maybe this summer, so look for it. I'm sure he will appreciate it.
Let's see, last Wednesday, I had the pleasure of joining some of our PNEA leadership, as well as Mary Mukler, at the MNEA Legislative Reception down in University City. That was a great event, opportunity to meet with some of our legislators, hear about current topics in Jeff City, and understand what might be coming our way in terms of impact to Parkway. Also, last Friday, had the pleasure of joining Dr. Malito and some of our administration, as well as administration of SSD, at the PNEA Mardi Gras Party, which really was relatively subdued on the scale of Mardi Gras parties, but was a wonderful event to spend some time with some of our fantastic PACCD leadership. Did I say PACCD earlier? I think I said, I'm sorry, I messed that up. PACCD leadership that really does some fantastic things for our district, and an opportunity to meet them on a personal level and spend some time with them was also fantastic, so thank you. That takes us to ten point O, action items consent. Mr. Major?
Ten point zero one, approval of minutes, regular, January twenty-seven, 2010. Ten point zero two, approval of personnel matters. Ten point zero three, approval of checks and wire transfers to the weeks of January twenty-nine and February five, 2010. Ten point zero four, approval of financial report, December two thousand and nine. Ten point zero five, approval of bids, quotations, and agreements, none. Ten point zero six, acceptance of gifts, West High School. Ten point zero seven, approval of professional services, A, Interchange Technologies, Inc., B, Authentic Education. Ten point zero eight, approval of GCBA, AA dot BP, one-year-only teachers. Ten point zero nine, approval of GCFC dot BP credentials. Ten point one zero, one zero, approval of GCGA dot BP and G, absence-from-duty substitute teachers. Ten point one one, approval of GCHA dot BP and G, teacher-mentor program, certified employees. Ten point one two, approval of GCIC dot BP, professional development opportunities, administrative staff. Ten point one three, approval of workforce annual maintenance, and ten point one four, approval of Mosaic's Summer Fine Arts Academy, two thousand and nine, 2010.
Thank you, Mr. Major. Can I have a motion and second please to approve the items on tonight's consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Are there any items that need to be pulled? The action are closed. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Eleven point O, action items individual. This evening, there are none. Twelve point O, report. We have Dr. Chalene Shea, Coordinator of Assessment with our Achievement for All presentation.
Good evening, President Davis, Vice President Major, Board of Directors, Superintendent Dr. Malito, and Mrs. Kalanda. I'm Chalene Shea. I'm here to update you Achievement for All for the school year of two thousand and nine and ten. And before I start this presentation, I would like to recognize people who contribute into this report and continue to support quality education for students at Parkway. Of course, our Board of Education and our Superintendent Dr. Malito, and the Subs Council, and also the Curriculum and Development Division.
They are gone.[1733.37][1733.37](Laughter).
And especially Kathy Blackmore. Under her leadership, we truly believe together we can make differences in student learning and to increase student achievement. And also the District Assessment Committee, and District Building Testing Team, and the Project Parkway Goal One Focus C Committee, and our PARCE Work Group and Lead Support Group. And today's themes are, why are we doing this report? And what do we believe? And how is the Parkway Balanced Assessment System supporting student learning? And what are our results? And of course, we are doing this report is because this is our Board of Education Goal One Focus C, collect, analyze, and use data from national, state, and Parkway assessments to monitor curriculum, inform instruction, and implement academic interventions to increase student achievement. And also, it's required by state, MSEP Standards Six Point And also, it's required by state, MSEP Standard six point two point three. The Board annually reviews performance data. And so for what we are held accountable, we are held accountable by the No Child Left Behind, measured by AYP, and we are held accountable by the MSEP, which is measured by APR. And we are also held accountable by Parkway students. And later on, we are working on our new mission, which is draft number five, and our vision and our learning principle. After Board approves in June, that will be what we are accountable for. So how is Parkway Balanced Assessment System support student learning? This system helps us understand why we are doing assessments, what assessments you are, we are using, and how do we do with the results in order to increase student learning and increase student achievement. The District builds structures to support this system. So we have building testing teams responsible for national and state assessment administration. And we have our curriculum guide developed by our coordinators and our administrators help us setting the clear achievement standards, and also set clear learning targets for our kids. And we have PARCE Work Group, make sure all users has all the information they need to make decisions, including the Board and Superintendent Dr. Malito. And also make sure all the reports are user-friendly, so we are effectively communicate those information. And we also have PARCE Lead Support Group, along with our curriculum coordinators and administrators, to promote assessment literacy, so we will help our student learning, increasing student motivation, in order to increase student learning. And the Parkway District Assessment Committee oversees this assessment system. And so with all the structures in place, we can make learning happen. So the state and federal level accountability, in two oh nine, the annual performance report, we got Parkway received the distinction in performance for high achievement. This is the consecutive nine years we got, we earned this award. And in the AYP, Parkway met Communication Arts, A subgroups out of eight groups, and met math, three subgroups out of eight. So Parkway met sixty-nine percent of our subgroups. State met forty-five percent of state's subgroups. So who are we? Parkway is a diverse district. By looking at the demographic information for Parkway for the past five years and compare with the state, we can see Parkway has more eleven percent Asian population, Asian students, and the state only have two percent. And we are comparable in the African-American student, we have sixteen percent, and state has close to eighteen percent. And we have about seventy percent student are white, and state has seventy-six percent. We have seventeen percent students receiving free reduced lunch. State has close to forty-four percent. And look at the enrollment. Parkway has the decreasing on the enrollment for the past five years, and state has similar trend for the past three years, decline on the enrollment. Parkway outperforming state and the nation, including math, EOC, Stanford Explorer Plan, ACT, and AP Advanced Program. So look at the AYP two oh nine Communication Arts, for the four years information, red bars are Parkway, the blue bars are the state. So we are outperform the state for the total population. We are outperform the state for white, Asian, IEP students, and LEP. And we are outperform African-American student in the state for the year of two oh nine. However, we are underperformed our free reduced lunch student compared to the state. And the math has the similar trend. We are outperform the state on the total, on white, on Asian, on IEP, on LEP. And we are comparable with the state for African-American student in two oh nine. We are underperformed on the free reduced lunch student compared to the state. In Stanford, we, it's five years information. This is the fifth grade, sixth grade, and seventh grade, and this black line is the national average. So we are outperform the national average in the Stanford for total reading, as well as total math. For Explore Score, Explore is eighth grade, take the pre-ACT for middle school. The blue bar is Parkway, red is nation, and green is the benchmark score. So we are outperform the nation, outperform the benchmark score. So when we compare for the past four years with this nation, Parkway outperform the nation. And then we are on the second highest for our past four years in the Explore Score. And our math is the highest score for the past four years. And our English is the second highest score for our past four years in the Explore Score. And Plan, again, we are outperform the nation, we are outperform the benchmark score for two oh nine and ten. And compared to the nation for the past five years, our Plan is the second highest one for the past five years. And our math is the highest one for the past five years. And our science is the second highest one for the past five years. For ACT, the percentage of Parkway graduates taking ACT is eighty-two percent. And Missouri is seventy percent of graduates taking ACT. The nation is forty-five percent. So by two thousand and ten, we probably will close to one hundred percent of our students taking ACT, because in this April, April twenty-eight, we are going to have all the eleventh grade taking ACT. And so that percentage will dramatically increase for two thousand and ten. And our ACT score, again, we are the green bar, and the state is the red bar, and the nation is the blue bar. We are outperform the nation and the state for the past four years. And when we compare to the past five, four years, we are outperform the state. And for English, we are, we have the highest score this year for the past four years. We have the second highest score for the past four years. And then for our composite score, we have two years in a row score at the twenty-four point one. In terms of AP, this is the number of students taking AP. We have five hundred sixty-five students taking AP. It's higher than the last year. And student taking AP tests, one student can take more than one AP test. So this information tells us there are twenty-eight percent of tests, student earned three or higher on the score. And so by compare this information with the state and the nation, so again, we are eighty-two percent of our tests that our student took earned the score three or higher. And compared to the Missouri, it has sixty-four percent of the tests took by the student who earned three or higher. And the nation is fifty-nine percent. So we are outperform the state and the nation. Parkway has a gap existing among subgroups, although some areas are closing the gaps. The gaps are consistent with the state and the national trends. So for example, Parkway's math Communication Arts, we are closing the gap between our total population and African-American students. The gap is closing, and this is a good closing gap. We are improving, and then our subgroup improving even more, so that's a great way to closing the gap. And we are also closing the gap for the total and student with IEP. For Explore Achievement Gap, this chart is for Parkway Explore Results by subgroup, and this chart is for Missouri, and this chart is for the nation. So by observing the length of the bars, you can see Parkway's bars are higher, taller than Missouri than the nation, except the African-American student bar. We have thirteen point one composite score for our African-American students. Missouri has thirteen point seven, and this nation has thirteen point two. So there's a gap there. For Plan, again, we observe the bar from our Parkway, Missouri, and the nation, we are taller, our bars are taller than the state and the nation. And our African-American student bar is higher, fifteen point eight, compared to Missouri, fifteen point four, compared to the state, fifteen point one. For ACT Achievement Gap, this chart is for four years in a row, and the red represents Parkway, and the blue represent Missouri, green represent the nation. And the first chunk of the bar, this part is all students. The second one is Asian students. Third one is African-American students, then Hispanic and white. So you can see the gap existing among Parkway subgroup for African-American students, and it's the same trend as Missouri and the nation. So, and this is the similar trend for the past four years. So gap does exist, but it's also the trend for the nation and the state. In terms of AP Achievement Gap, there are one hundred eighty-seven tests Asian student took, and then there are eight hundred twenty-two tests that white student took, and there are twenty-six tests that African-American student took, and three tests that Hispanic student took. So from this chart, we can see the gap right there. And then in terms of the results, there are eighty-five, eighty-four percent of the tests Asian student took earned three or higher. So the gap in this chart is not that dramatic as prior one. And we have eighty-one percent of the tests took by black students earned three or higher. And then there are sixty-seven percent of tests Hispanic student took earned three or higher, and eighty-one percent tests took by white student earned three or higher. So Parkway sustained high standards on other outcome measures. So we have high attendance rate. It's about ninety-four percent or higher. But I want to bring your attention that for the past two years, our attendance rate is slightly lower than the state attendance rate. And graduation rate, we are higher than the state. It's about ninety-three or ninety-four percent graduation rate. And when we compare graduation rate for subgroups, we are doing a great job, and I want to bring to your attention our African-American student graduation rate. We are on the upward trend. And look at the state trend. State has the downward trend. So there are many initiatives happening at the district. For example, diversity in action, many of the initiatives may contribute to this information. And then I also want to bring your attention about Hispanic graduation rate. We had a drop from two oh nine, two oh eight to two oh nine, and the state doesn't have a drop like that. And so that, we are studying why we have this kind of drop for our Hispanic graduates. And our graduate follow-up, we have ninety-three percent or higher students are entering two years or four years universities or technical institute, institutions, and it's higher than the state. So the conclusion is Parkway is a diverse district. Parkway outperform the state and the nation. Gap exists in Parkway, and also exists in state and the nation. Parkway hold high standards on other outcome measures. The, today's information, it's only a snapshot for our student learning, and what we need is a photo album. So from here, I would like to use this quote to conclude my presentation. What gets us into trouble is not what we don't know, it's what we know for sure that just aren't so. Thank you very much for listening to the presentation. Any questions? Yes?
Chalene, I just want to say I really appreciate the fact that we had thirty-four more African-American students that graduated compared to the last year. And I know that's effort by some of our people, teachers and students themselves. Do you look for that trend to continue?
I think so.
Was that something special we did in two thousand and nine?
I am confident that will continue.
That would be wonderful.
To help answer that question, the nice thing that the Parkway Board has offered is you offered the Missouri Options Program and the REACH Program over at ISC, and that's keeping more students in school and then allowing them to graduate. And then when you add in Fern Ridge, which has twenty-five to thirty kids every year, those things are helping us compared to, say, five or six years ago.
Another question I had has to do with No Child Left Behind, and when you measure our schools, it looks like, I know none of our middle, or all of our middle schools are in some form of improvement there. Is that because the No Child Left Behind, that bar got raised, even though we might have improved, we didn't improve enough? Is that part of it, or?
Yeah, that's part of the reason, yes, correct. Because every year, the proficient target went up. It's went up, every year goes up about nine, eight to nine percent. And so want to reach that by twenty fourteen, for one hundred percent, it is, it is not easy. And so we have, our secondary schools are in the improvement, different shape of forms, correct? Yeah.
So are all of our schools going to be in that by two thousand and fourteen?
Eventually. I think the whole state will. That's what the state people said. It will.
Well, I don't know. I'm very hopeful with the Department of Education's announcement last week that they're going to work on changing some of those rules, so that two thousand and fourteen is not going to be the death sentence we all think it is, hopefully. But it also, it makes me very uneasy. I'm sure it makes you uneasy, because we don't know what we're looking at. I think we're looking at national testing and national standards, but we'll see. Hopefully, I'm sure we'll just go with the flow, where our ducks are in a row now, so.
Well, we all want something. And then when you have, when the state of Missouri says that thirteen out of fourteen areas we show that we're distinguished, and then the No Child Left Behind penalizes you, something's out of whack.
Just a couple of questions regarding our ACT results. And I guess first and foremost, we're taking a bold step with, hopefully, close to universal testing this year. Do you have a notion of what, there are obviously some, some students going to be taking that test this year that historically have not taken it.
That's correct.
And my guesstimation would be that that may have some impact on our overall.
Score for next year? Yes.
Do you, do you, do you have some estimation of what we might expect on that front?
Yes, we do. We are check with, we talked to ACT Research Department, and they gave us an estimation. It probably will be one point, close to one point drop. Yeah. Because of the percentage of student taking ACT, and they did, the ACT Department, Research Department did the study on the school district who are taking ACT from eighty-five percent student taking ACT to one hundred percent. So every, every seven percent or eight percent, there will be a certain point drop. So we anticipate that, yeah.
Okay. And what, what are the implications of, once we have near universal participation, what, is there going to be any refinement to what we can learn from our ACT scores? Is that going to help us in assessing our overall efforts?
Yes. Can I defer that to Kathy?
I think it will help us have another measurement over time, from Explore to Plan to ACT. And we're going to be able to look at those standards in our curriculum. So the next six-year cycle that I talked about, we can really key in on those standards like we have with the SHOMI standards. And I do think it'll help us, and I think we will have to have an ACT plan of how we improve scores. But that'll give us then eight, ten, and eleven. So Explore is an eight.
And then Explore and Plan are near universal at this point?
They are universal.
It'll give us some valid comparisons.
Absolutely. And then we'll be able to track the data in PARCE by standard, and some of the things that we're doing now over a three-year time. So I do think we can. So I do think we can attack it like we're doing the Show Me standards and get the ACT standards in our OCG. So there's a way to, to do it.
Okay. And I guess, talking in overall percentages and you're saying there may be a drop, I think we may also have some real pleasant, single and individual outcomes there. And I, I really think that's an important thing for us to be doing is just get everybody involved. And there may be some individuals who are not contemplating college or something else, and that may change their mind in another direction.
It certainly is a portal for kids to get to college. And, and all of our kids deserve that. And I think that with every child taking it, it'll be, it'll be more comparable to the MAP because all of our students take that. So I think it'll be good data for us to, to work with.
Okay. Thank you.
There's a relatively high correlation between Plan Performance in 10th Grade and ACT in 11th Grade, right? So, so the fact that our composite score went up on Plan this year, that may counteract some of that larger population effect.
You are correct. Because this Plan, next year, next year, this 10th grade will become 11th grade. And so because of the, the group of students, they are increasing on Plan. So we will anticipate they will be increasing on the ACT. You are correct.
What you said, Mr. Major, in conjunction with the A-plus program that we're moving into, that's also going to be a great avenue for kids to move on to college. So I think those two things are really positive factors for our kids. And thank you for this great report. It's always so wonderfully done, easy to understand, and very well prepared, and we all appreciate your hard work.
Can you come back next year and do it again? Four more years.
What I'd like to offer to the Board is my compliments to Dr. Shea because when she entered our district a few years ago, she has brought the standard of studying data and analyzing it to help teaching, but also to help learning so our students can improve over their 12 and 13 years in Parkway. So I compliment you. I thank you. You've brought us a long way. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much for all your support.
And I think we need to compliment you on your patience with board members too. Because when you sit down with us, we ask you a lot of questions, and you never lose your, your patience, and you always answer us with a very pleasant smile. So thank you.
We love your questions.
Thank you, Dr. Shea. Second, Dr. Molito's perspective. It's unfortunately, it's been a short period of time that you've been with Parkway, but your influence on the district is disproportionate to that. And we're going to miss you greatly. But best of luck in, in your future endeavors.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you.
13.0 Work Session, there is none this evening. 14.0 Policy Review. There are eight items on the agenda for policy review this evening. Are there any questions or any items that we need to pull in discussion? Hearing None, those will be moved to the Consent Items for the February 24th meeting. 15.0 Call for a Special Meeting, None. 16.0 Call for a Closed Meeting, February 24, 2010. Can I have a motion and second please that the Board of Education call for a closed meeting on Wednesday, February 24, 2010, at 6:30 PM and/or immediately following the regular meeting at Central Middle School for the purpose of considering, one, legal actions, causes of action or litigation involving the district and any confidential or privileged communications between the district and its representatives and its attorneys, 610.021.1. Two, hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting of particular employees by the district when personal information about the employees discussed or recorded, 610.021.3. Three, preparations on behalf of the district or its representative for negotiation with employee groups, including any discussion or work product, 610.021.9. And four, individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings, and records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment, 610.021.13.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please, Ms. Kalenda.
Mrs. Feldman?
Yes.
Mr. Jakes?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mrs. Mulman?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes. Motion carries five zero. And motion and second please to adjourn the regular meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you for your attendance this evening. We'll adjourn the closed session.
I have a lot of updates. And so do not turn off.
Yeah, me too.